He's not, so maybe he's in route. Commissioner guys, have you heard from?
No, I.
Neither.
Tell me not to talk with each other.
Okay. Okay, well, we might as well begin. It's nine oh six. And if he else is watched, hopefully he comes in on the phone.
Alright, work session is just a plain work session.
Work session.
Okay. Alright. If you want, Commissioner, I can go over the agenda. Okay, on today's meeting for the work session, we've got presentation of the aging and adult staff reorganization request. This presentation will be done by Tammy, our aging director. And then item number two, Pat Creek Fire Efforts Update. This will also be kind of Tammy, both of us, either one. Then number three, discussion of attendance policy. This will be Anne Marie. Then item from number four, Fry Canyon Discussion and BLM Support Letter. That'll be Nick. Come in and give that presentation. An update of what's going on in Fry Canyon. And then at the end of this, we do need to make a motion to enter into close executive session. To discuss the character professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual as permitted under UCA fifty-two dash four dash two oh five. That's your agenda for this morning.
Okay. Go ahead and. Note that Mr. Mary Boy, Commissioner Mary Boy is. Have not communicated where he is at this time, so we'll just go ahead and proceed with it. Meeting called to order, time. Don't have, is that correct?
Nine oh eight.
Okay. As you recall, we have honorable Bruce Adams here and myself. Staff or president. Administrator. The. Three, four. Four people are here. At the office and also. Olio. Cindy Olio is here. So with that, I'll go ahead and go with the first presentation. Mister. Madam.
Yeah, we'll turn it over. Yeah.
So I'm just asking to have you consider doing a reorganization of our aging department. I've had an ad in the paper for several months now to replace staff. At the Monticello Center and it's really hard to find anybody that will even apply. And so the position that I have right now is a part-time position. And we're looking at moving her from part-time to full-time. She works with the case managers right now, but she's helped all through COVID at all of the senior centers in the kitchen. And this would just be moving her from part-time to full-time. Her full-time wage with benefits would be twenty-four seven or twenty-seven for twenty a year. It to hire two part-time, so to fill another part-time, it would be thirty-three eight forty-nine. So it is a cost savings to have her go full. Instead of continuing to pursue another part-time, plus the cost of running the ad in the paper every week. Until we can get somebody hired. And I've given you the current org chart. And then behind that is the proposed org chart. So this would be moving the case manager that is part-time staff. To case manager, part-time staff, but also under the Monticello Center. Do you have any questions for me on that?
Need the help.
I need the help. And right now she's been filling in since we've lost staff there.
Is this, are you talking about your Monticello Center Director?
No, I still have the center director. It's a part-time staff position that we lost at the Monticello Center.
So. She quit?
My Monticello Center Director? No, she's still there. It's a part-time staff member that we lost at that center.
So. Who are you moving in full-time?
So the case manager, staff underneath Darren and Dalton. She's part-time. She will move to full-time and she'll work in the office with them. And the rest of her time, she'll work at the Monticello Center. And that way we don't bump up against that twenty-nine hours or less a week.
Who are we talking about then?
Um Caroline Shumway.
Oh, okay.
It was cheaper to make her full-time. Instead of keep two part-time positions and so. Kind of keeps her on staff. Bumps her into full-time status.
We have to vote on that in the commission meeting then.
Um, no, this is just more of an organization change. You approved the budgets for, for. Kind of their salaries and everything and it's still keeping in line with the budget. And so we wanted to present it to you so that you, you guys were aware of it to make sure that the organization change made sense and so. If it makes sense, we continue to move forward. It's in line with their budget.
So the transfer budget. Would be administratively handled?
Yeah, it's the budgets are already there. You approved them at the first of the year. There's, there's not even a budget change that we have to do for this. We've been out. That position's been vacant for a few months. We can't hire the position. Nobody's applying for part-time. Across the board, I think across the nation, this is kind of the same status as, as you have unemployment payroll protection. Uh, with people that pay so lucrative, there's no way we can compete at, at our part-time wage. So as we put this out to, to market and nobody's turned in applications or resumes on it. And we just felt, looking at it, if we make this individual full-time. In essence, it's still cheaper than, than what it would be had we hired two people. So let's just make the person full-time. Uh, we worried, we talked about the workload on here and we don't feel that there'll be an added workload. Where it was a part-time, part-time position, it's just split in half the day. And so still cost savings in general. So we don't have to do anything with the budget at all. Benefits will be a little bit more. But it's still in line with where we're at with two part-time wages. I don't know if that's a good thing or just a comment that we pay so low. You could make somebody full-time.
It was either us or McDonald's.
Yeah.
I don't know how I'm able to keep my staff because they're all under McDonald's wages.
Yeah.
I know we're losing John David.
But if you're okay with that, we'll go ahead and make that change.
Okay, would you like to talk about?
Pat Creek Fire Efforts.
That'll be Mac and I. So. I did an initial report for Mac. I don't know if he has shared that with. Uh, the commission. Initially through the start of the fire up until June fifteenth, we had um about three hundred and seventy man-hours. And equipment hours on the fire. I've met with an engineering firm and we've just initially talked a little bit about flooding and debris flow. Mac has gone over to, is it Castle Dale? To look at um their debris. A pond or catchment area. So right now, our main concern is going to be flooding and debris field. They've told us the debris field won't be happening for probably a year because it takes a while for the roots to quit. Holding the ground. So this year, our main concern is flooding. We've asked about funding. We're doing the emergency watershed project funding. We have a letter on commission. That is for approval to notify the NRCS that we're looking at that funding. The EWP funding has been spent for this year. There might be funding available if other entities haven't used their funding. But right now that funding has been spent for the year, but this letter just notifies the NRCS that we're going to. We have an intent to apply for help for that funding. So it lets them know that we're seeking funding to help with watershed. Uh, there is funding available through the homeland mitigation grant, the hazard mitigation grant program. That was identified. When the fire went to an FMAG, which is a federally managed fire. So that funding is available, but it won't be available for several months. It's about five to six hundred thousand. And it can be done for hazard mitigation projects, which is debris catch basins. But that funding still won't be available for a while. So right now immediate funding for anything is not available. When I talked to the engineers, they said what we need to look at is sandbagging for any of those homes that. They feel might need sandbags when the monsoons come and flooding. The big stuff, the projects that will come when the ground funding is in place. I do have a meeting scheduled with the post wildfire team. They're supposed to be down on the thirteenth. I'm looking for a place to hold the meeting, but the team will be down to meet with. All of the community members that were impacted in Pat Creek.
They were that meeting at or?
I notified them all this morning. I've been in touch with all of them by letter and email several times now.
Was there any homes destroyed that were not second homes?
There was one home that was destroyed that was not a secondary home. Yes.
And they, and somebody is helping them find a place to stay or what's the status?
They've, we contacted Red Cross and Red Cross has been in touch with all of the homeowners, especially the one that um. Lost their primary residence.
Yeah, Red Cross, they've got, um, they've got programs available for primary homeowners. Um, the hard part is secondary homeowners. There's, there's really not a lot of programs out there where they're kind of a vacation or rental home type. That secondary property or secondary use. And so that makes it a little bit hard in this area. And kind of like Tammy had mentioned, our. Our immediate focus is really um as staff and kind of that emergency recovery mode uh is more. About the life safety and, and taking care of. And protecting the homes, whether they're secondary or primary. So the sandbag effort, I mean, we'll take the sandbags out there and a load of sand and, and place it there so the community members can. Have that available if there's worries that they've had in the past. I mean typically. Most times you know where the floods are going to come if they come on your property and, and be able to, to sandbag and kind of. Kind of just ramp up for that. We know the monsoons are coming and so we're, we're super worried about what, what does the runoff? Look like coming through that area now that you don't have the vegetation and everything to catch and slow it down. And so. That's one of the things that we're, we're kind of looking at now. In general, um, is just that life safety and protection of the structures. And so our, our main efforts will be that. And then the second one, kind of like Tammy had mentioned, working with, so you have the bear team and, and the bear team is, is. Kind of a forest service team that comes in and, and analyzes the damage of the fire. Protecting the forest, protecting the road, uh, elements of the forest so that maintain access to the public. Items like that, but they really don't look at the structures down below that are, structures are on private. And so. There's that bear team that'll be there, the NRCS when they come in and do their evaluation. They're looking more at the, the agricultural side and the watershed, uh, kind of like Tammy had mentioned that watershed program. And now, once they have their an- analysis done, uh, that'll kind of give us an idea of what we need to do as far as the bigger. Issues, the, the bigger concerns that we would have higher up on the mountain, but yet you still have. Uh, this. Section of private property that really isn't studied. We know that, you know, Pat Creek has flooded. Uh, myriad of times in the past when they hit those hundred-year or fifty-year storms, whatever. Uh, and you get that, that watershed, just that flooding that comes off the mountain. Now without um the brush and everything else to kind of hold it back and slow it down, we're super concerned of what that looks like down below. And so our first efforts is like, let's, let's get them um the means to at least protect their homes first. We'll look at. Stream diversion. Um, there's a program with the state water where you can, there is a, a diverted portion to. Two diverted portions of the stream or Pat Creek, not a stream, it's the creek. Uh, that go into private property that we need to go in and make sure that um those diversions are, are stable. Uh, and can withstand, you know, a lot of water coming through there. And so. All of this is in preparation. When I, when I went on that tour at Emery County, they've got obviously bigger. Bigger streams that come off of um their watershed and feed all year long. Uh, their power plant sits on that. So. They, they had a lot of problems where they had gone in and prepared a debris basin. Uh, debris catches and there was so much debris that came off of those fires and they had two fires. Uh, so just in, in an update, you're, we're just under nine thousand acres of total fire area. In, in this fire here in Pat Creek. They, they were faced up, they were. They were closer up to like the fifty thousand mark on their acreage of fire burn. So they had a lot of more canyon hillside burnage than we do. But nevertheless, that, the basins and everything that they put into place were so small, so minimal that they were overwhelmed. And with the water and with that debris catching, they just, they just blew out. And so in that tour, that was one of the things that was highlighted is don't, don't go cheap on, on trying to protect. You know, spend the money, do it right, um, go big. And one of the things they had mentioned, two of the things is just your debris basin catch. So you gotta catch the debris and. But also the silt that's coming off there because now there's no longer vegetation. Whether it's fox tail grasses, whatever is through there. Uh, you no longer have that. It's burned off. So now they have a bunch of silt that flows through there. And that silt, you have the wash outs, the wash outs. Um, because of that, uh, along the roads, a lot of Pat Creek. Goes down adjacent to roads and so. You know, there may be areas where that. There's so much water coming in there, they're eating into the road bank, things like that, that we've just got to start going through and looking at. All of that area to see what up higher uh has a potential uh to flood out, wash out. Cause bigger issues, but up above, you know, when you look at uh this canyon and how this canyon folds into Pat Creek. Uh, it's just making sure we have everything in place to try to protect everything downstream. And then after you get out of the life safety and structure protection, then you, we, obviously we've got to focus next on. Um, the watershed, what does that look like for watershed and? Catches so that. That, some of the things that they had to do with their streams is diversion streams were. They split stream beds and kind of. Took efforts to slow down the water coming off of the hillside so that it wasn't flowing so fast. To cause so much damage. Uh, and so there's things like that, that um the NRCS that will look at in their study. Uh, of what, what we need to implement higher up above with that watershed. Uh, to protect it so it doesn't come down in such great forces and combine. And other areas to overwhelm that system. And so. There's a lot um that we're waiting for with the study. In the meantime. Instead of waiting on these studies, we felt it best to, to go ahead and, and pull some of these triggers, which NRCS is one of them. Um, we've got a letter in commission meeting that, that would like your approval and support of, which is the trigger to. To open up the funding mechanism and kind of like Tammy had mentioned, they don't have funds right now. In there, it's not something that the federal government just keeps. Millions of dollars in a fund. It's, it's mainly for disasters. If. Projects complete throughout the state and there, there's residual funding left in those, in those projects. Then the money floats back to the system and then they can out, reallocate those monies to us. But it's kind of put in the application, put in the letter and wait in line. Because there's other disasters and things that have taken place throughout the United States. That will also be waiting in line for this money. If there's a bigger event, a bigger natural disaster than the feds. They seem to fund the bigger disaster and then they put kind of these pork belly projects in with that funding so that. Everything that's waiting in line also gets funded. And so these bigger projects, when you look at Emery County, they're up to right now about fifteen million dollars. And what they've spent in just projects there. And this is ten years of, of projects. So. And, and kind of like they had mentioned. Everything, the, the biggest effect really didn't come directly after the fire. It was that next year, the next, you know, rainy season that hit. Once the trees are knocking down and they still have, even ten years after the fire, they still have log jams that have not come. Down, have not released from the mountainside that they know uh will fill back up their debris basins. And so even though we're not that big of a fire, we'll, we're still in an area that has that. You'll have debris and, and it's something that we need to be able to be prepared for to catch that. We've reached out to Jones and DeMille. Uh, Tammy met with them last week and they'll help us kind of on uh that engineering side of what, what we need to do as far as. Um, those diversion uh on the stream beds and then we'll propose that to the State Division of Drinking Water. And the state, they have funds available immediately for emergency protection of, of that water. And so we'll be applying with them. We've been working with Mark Stillson. He's been, he's been great to work with us as well. He was the one that kind of arranged that tour. Up in Emery County so that we can kind of just get a better idea of what, what is taking place and what is going on um in that area. And so hopefully that kind of gives you a better sense of where we're going um with our emergency operations efforts and. I don't know, Tammy, if you had more to add that I missed on there?
I do just have a few more things. Um, the six hundred thousand from the HMPG grant or the Hazard Mitigation Grant. That requires either a cash match or an in-kind. So our match would have to be a hundred and fifty thousand. So it'd have to either be dollars or our work matching that funding for that project. I did speak with FEMA in regards to the debris. And where this is not a federally declared disaster, there's nothing that they can do to help us with debris. Either in, in the trenches or on private property. And they also let me know that. Debris is something that FEMA does not clean up. Debris is, they said, the responsibility of the property owner. So there are volunteer organizations out there that we can contact that can come in and help. The residents with debris. But as far as funding for debris or having FEMA help with that, they, they can't do it.
One of the things with the homeowners, there was a request originally of tipping fees uh at the landfills. What does that look like? Now that you have structures that have been burned um and all of that. You know, those leftover homes have to be demoed um and hauled off to a landfill. Uh, originally we had, we had explored the possibility of just placing. A container there onsite and having. Those residents just fill up the container and then we would come in and periodically pick up that container and take it back to the landfill. But when you look at. On a bigger scale, when you look at demolishing homes, that's, that's more than one container and it's, it's more than one trip a day. So as, as we analyze that, if we were to stick a, a bigger bin onsite, kind of that semi tractor. Trailer size of a bin there. It would, for us to, to just unload that twice a day, that's. That's an employee that's pretty much driving. So it's about four hours round trip to the land, landfill. Um, which two times a day, that, that doesn't get you a lot, especially if there's a contractor. Working there, filling up these bins, there would be a lot of wait time with that contractor, just sitting there in between two loads a day. And so we, we kind of checked that one off. It didn't, didn't make sense. It, it doesn't make uh sense for the county. Just to do that twice a day. I know we're just working with and communicating with Grand County, there may be an opportunity where we can, or they, you know. In Grand County uh could give a discount in tipping fees. But a lot of it's going to depend on, on how much, and knowing how much the, the homeowners there, property owners are going to get. From their insurance. Their insurance will, will cover part of this uh cost. And so if the insurance is providing costs for it. To me, it doesn't make sense for the county or any county to waive fees a hundred percent. But a discount, you know, if, if we're working in partnership with these homeowners, it does make sense for a discount. But I think. If I were to contract this out and bring a contractor in and excavation team that comes in and does the demol, the demo and everything on. Uh, that site, on those homes, it makes a little bit more sense, a little bit more feasible. If they're able to take that, um, that waste into Grand County, which is just down the road from, from where they're at. And so. I'll continue to, to vet that and work with Grand County to see if there are any discounts that they can give in there. I told uh Grand County uh Commissioner Ian or Commissioner in conversations with her that. Really San Juan County, we don't have any money uh to, to pay for this. We don't have any money that we can reimburse Grand County. You know, to, to take on this, but if the individuals are receiving insurance funds for debris removal and demolition of their. Their burnt homes or burnt structures, then it just makes sense um to work with everyone to try to get that discounted rate. Whatever the insurance is paying uh for that debris removal. Then working with those homeowners to, to make, make that viable, both at the, the gate, at the landfill as well as the. The homeowner's insurance. And so that, that kind of would kind of help, I think, with that. And then we can look at. Further exploration of just placing a bin there for more of the outside um stuff that was burnt, if it, if it makes sense to do so. It's just a longer distance. There is. There is a shortcut to all of that. If um, if we worked with Monticello City, Monticello City, they do take in. Um, at their landfill disposal of, of construction debris where you've got wood. Uh, materials like that in, in their pit. That's a possibility as well. Instead of taking it all the way to our landfill, just bring it into Monticello, but there would have to be some type of arrangement there. With Monticello City to take on that um at a cost as well. And so that's kind of what we're looking for as far as the debris side of that.
That's all I have.
I've got, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Well, really, really appreciate. Our county staff and the response that they've made to this. Fire and want to compliment Tammy and her team. Mac and all the people that have put in so many hours on this fire and. And help to. Uh, coordinate with. Uh, federal. Uh, and state firefighting efforts. I know disasters like this happen and there's always a group of heroes. That emerge at the top of the milk bucket. And we certainly have many heroes in San Juan County that have. Top of the milk bucket and we certainly have many heroes in San Juan County that have. Have given Herculean efforts and I want to compliment each and every one of them. It's interesting to me that FEMA. Says that um when something like this happens. Uh they don't have any help to offer. But the landowner on the majority of this property was the federal government, it was the Forest Service and the B L M. Cause that's what we have in San Juan County. Ninety-two percent of our land is is not private land. So for FEMA to say that's up to the private property owner, they're they're. They're contradicting themselves, so I find it really interesting that. That they want to put it off on somebody else, even though it's ends up being the Forest Service and the B L M. So I'm sure the Forest Service and the B L M are going to say they don't have the money in their budget to to deal with this, but. Think we ought to put some pressure on them, Tammy and Mac. To do some mitigation because they're the landowner. And I know at the state level in years past with other fires that. That we've dealt with through U A C and other organizations. Maybe Nick, uh I don't know if you're the right person, but Tammy or Nick. Maybe we ought to contact Reg Johnson at the Pliptco office. And see what the state can do to help reseed. This area, I know they've done that in other fire areas. Uh they did it on on the other side, the state had a a real big effort, immediate effort. To reseed the burned areas so that they can. You know, when those rains come, those seeds will sprout and they'll they'll start growing, but. I think the legislature can can appropriate money, I think maybe Reg's office. Can help, but um we hadn't ought to stop and depend on on the Forest Service or B L M to. To do anything to to re regenerate the growth in this area and. It looked, it sounds to me like the whole burned area is going to. Um wash down into Pat Creek eventually. There probably isn't other drainages that it's going to end up going into, Tammy?
So three creeks, so Pat Creek, Brumley and Mill Creek.
Oh, so we'll get in the Mill Creek too, huh?
They they barely got the burn severity map, I think, last Friday. Uh they've had a hard time getting the satellite to get the severity of it because every time the satellite would go over, it was cloudy.
Right.
So.
That was just smoke, it wasn't any, there's no clouds, it's just smoke.
So the the good thing is, is the majority of the burn is not um. Red on the burn severity, there is some red, but it's up higher and it's not quite on those. Specific creeks, but there is some flow that is.
I remember seeing a cloud back in sixty-two or sixty-four or something, so.
Some moisture then, yes, so yeah.
Anyway, uh if if you wouldn't mind following up with. Uh the state either and and Reg will know whether it needs to go to the legislature or whether. His office can do something, but I'd also suggest that we reach out to the Department of Ag. Uh we have a a contact there, I think, that we could. We could talk to and see if they can help because the and the people that have been affected. Uh one of the most affected people on the mountain are the grazers. And I think the Department of Ag has a role here that they could play. Uh as far as helping, you know, reseed that area as well, so. I'm just trying to think of all the possibilities of people that we could contact.
I think they're all a part of that post wildfire.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, with the N R C S and they've been.
That is coming down on the thirteenth, they're they're state and federal and local partners. That come in after a wildland fire event and they bring like water resources, ag resources.
Let's tell them that those state and federal doc uh dollars, don't put them in the ditch at the state capital. Put them in the ditch right here in San Juan County and then they'll get to where they need to go. Cause so many times those dollars passing through all the communities. Get spent before they ever get to the end of the ditch in San Juan County, so.
Um. We've been working with our local U S D E on this, so they're. Very aware and they're helping us through the application process as well, so they. They talked about that there are funds available for reseeding efforts and things like that.
Good.
But everything is wait for the study, wait for the study, well, the study doesn't take place until mid-July.
Well, I know that one of the one of the grazers on that mountain had to remove every cow he had.
Yes, yeah.
And um and his solution was he'd have to sell them all. That was five hundred head outfit, so.
Yeah.
That's pretty devastating and. And they and he won't be able to return there for several years, but but before the. Moisture comes, it it comes every forty years. So I saw it in sixty-two, so it'll be coming in twenty twenty, or is that fifty? So anyway, we ought to get some seed on the ground before the moisture comes if we can, but. Again, really thank our staff and the county people for responding to this disaster. I think there were people in La Salle that that helped and um certainly there was people in Grand County. The Red Cross and and uh I I'm I'm getting myself in trouble here trying to name all the people that I want to thank, but. Um. Um Willie, I remember when Navajo Mountain burned and um. All the debris ended up in the water tank there at Rainbow City and. We sent the staff out there, I remember Rick Bailey was in the water tank shoveling ash out of that water tank. Um there was a bunch of people and and I think David and others, but you know. The San Juan County cream always rises to the top when we have a disaster and thank you everybody for for all the work you've done. That's all I had.
Thank you.
And we did have a a member of the community that wanted to speak to us as well from Sky, she's been. Integral there in kind of making sure all the efforts are coordinated, I don't know if you want to hear her, we've kind of. Kept out public comments of where this is a work session meeting, more for administrative staff, I don't know if you want to hear her. Um comments or wait until regular commission meeting, it's kind of up to you guys how you want to proceed with that, but I just wanted to let you know that. She did ask to to make some comments.
Okay, I'll let.
Okay, let's see, let me see if I can find her and I'll unmute her.
There we have time, nine forty-three.
It's nine forty-three, we've got, let's see. Two two discussions and a work session meeting is going to take a chunk. Um out of that, so maybe three minutes?
Yes.
Real quick, okay. One Sky, if you're there, I'll ask to unmute you real fast. Okay, Sky, you should be unmuted.
Hi, Ollie, can you hear me?
I can, go ahead, Sky.
Oh, perfect, so I am the um homeowner, my family is the primary homeowners that lost our house in the Pat Creek fire. Um and we have had, um I have had talks with Mac and Tammy and I really appreciate. Um them being uh a voice to be able to reach out to for what um we need. Um and he alluded to it a little bit briefly, um when we're talking about the debris removal and so I look forward to hoping. Hopefully figuring out a way that we can um work together to get that hurdle passed, we um. We do have funds, um they are limited, so um that's really what I'm hoping to work. Work with you all on um is trying to figure out how we can. Get rid of that debris on our property and rebuild as soon as possible, so. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the efforts that have um been explored thus far and I really. Hope we can continue that so we can we can move past this as soon as possible.
Thank you, Sky. Alright, yeah, so we'll continue to go forward, I do me, I have a meeting uh this evening with um. Gary Torres with the B L M as well as Mike Gilroy with the Forest Service and so just kind of making sure that in. Cooperation, coordination with uh those two entities, B L M and Forest Service work and Commissioner. Adams, you had mentioned that they they own a big portion of this fire, um as well as. State Fire Warden will also be there with us in that meeting, just to make sure everybody knows where. One another is going, so we're not stepping on toes, everybody's marching at the same beat, same drum um type. System through this process, I think you've got a lot of people that are wanting to help. Lot of efforts out there, a lot of funding mechanisms that we can bring in, it's just a matter of making sure we're all in alignment. Um going forward, I know that the Forest Service had mentioned that they've worked with that grazer. Up there and other ranchers have come out and and kind of opened up their gates to to hold that. And feed, you know, that livestock up there and so we're also thankful for those. Unknown entities that are out there, those ranchers, those people that just come in and and offer donations and that to these. Residents of this area, there's been a lot of open hearts and and a lot of um. Efforts that probably go behind the scenes that we're not really fully aware of, you know, opening up. And bringing on more cows to your pasture area and kind of like Commissioner Adams mentioned is, it's not just this year. That they'll be holding those those animals on, it'll be multiple years until you get recovery back in there to. To be able to sustain cows on that without destroying a lot of the hillside watershed areas, it'll take a while and. And our ranchers and farmers in that area have been awesome to to open that up and so. Hopefully that helps, you know, but in the meantime, we've got a lot of a lot of. Efforts that need to take place, a lot of work that that you'll be seeing here come come before you. So we'll continue to report, um Grand County's wanted me to report in their meeting this evening. They're wanting to know what we're doing as well and it'll be kind of a a rehash of what we discussed today. I think our first and foremost um uh efforts are are going to be like I mentioned, life safety, saving structures.
Right.
Everything else and I know Grand County is super worried about the watershed, uh for me, that's. Although it kind of hand in hand, uh that's more secondary up on the mountain, what what we need to do rather than what do we need to do for the home level. And so. Alright, with that, we'll kind of unless you have any other questions, we can move into the discussion on the attendance policy update with. Anne Marie.
Hello. So this is just, we're updating policies, you guys are, you've seen a couple of them at least. So the objective of this one is to just set forth San Juan County's policies and procedures for handling employee absences, tardiness and kind of outline our timekeeping requirements. When you get hired on at San Juan County, you're actually given a pretty generous vacation leave package. And when we hire somebody, we hire them to do a job, when they're not here to do that or they use more time. More leave time than what we give them, it's disruptive to their departments. This has been an issue, even in the the few months that I've been here, we've had a few issues with this. So it outlines an absence is defined as a failure of an employee to report for work when he or she is scheduled to work. So we have two types of absences, we have an excused absence and an unexcused absence. Excused would be. Employee provides their supervisor sufficient notice, like at least twenty-four, at least forty-eight hours in advance. That they're not going to be here, so they want to go on vacation, they want to take a Friday off, they let their supervisor know, supervisor says, okay. That's alright, three times a year, the employee is allowed to call last minute and say. Hey, water mine broke in my house, I can't make it to work today without that counting against them. So they have three excused absences that they can take without notice in a year. An unexcused absence occurs when any of the above conditions are not met, so the employee did not give sufficient notice. It is not improved in advance, they do not have sufficient leave time to cover that absence or it's not one of those three that are excused. So if they're unable to come to work, they have to call, if they can't call, they have to have somebody else call for them. So an employee with three or more consecutive days of absence because of illness or injury may be required to write, provide proof of a physician's care. So and then it's a employees must take earned leave time for every absence unless allowed by county policy, a leave of absence, bereavement, jury duty. Um anything covered under the Family Medical Leave Act or A D A, Americans with Disabilities type stuff. It also says that department heads and elected officials, other than our commissioners, cannot authorize any additional type of leave. So we cannot have a department head just send in an entire department home for an extra holiday, extra vacation day. Paid time off, they can't do that, everything has to be approved through the commissioners. Um employees are expected to report to work and return from scheduled breaks on time, if you cannot report a scheduled, you must notify your supervisor. No later than when you're supposed to be there. A many employee who fails to report to work for a period of three days or more without notifying their supervisor will be considered to have abandoned their job and voluntarily terminated their employment relationship. So those are no call, no shows. Uh timekeeping, so we're moving to a timekeeper, which is on the computer. Any non-exempt employees have to accurately record the time they begin their work as well as the beginning and end of each of each meal. So each lunch. And the beginning and end, if they split their shift or leave early, they have to record that time. They are responsible for the time on their time sheet and they certify that it's accurate. Department head will review that and then say yes, you know, approve that time sheet. Any change to hours worked in timekeeper or on their Google time sheet must be approved. By the department head and any changes made without approval are subject to disciplinary action as per our policy. Overtime or after hours should be avoided. Um any overtime that cannot be avoided has to be pre-approved by the department head and the unapproved overtime could result in disciplinary action. This gets into with the convenience of your cell phones and reading your emails and your text messages. Um responding to phone calls and related duties, you can be compensated for those and so they should be performed on county time, which is your regularly scheduled shift. Any correspondence greater than ten minutes that cannot wait until regularly scheduled out. Regularly scheduled hours should be recorded, so we have to pay for that. But convenience of technology is not an excuse to work outside of your regularly scheduled hours, so if it can wait, it should wait. Then disciplinary action, so excessive absenteeism, this is what we're defining here. Excessive absenteeism is defined as three or more unexcused absences in a one-year period. And that may result in disciplinary action and then altering, falsifying, tampering. Your time records or recording time on another employee's time will result in appropriate disciplinary action based on the severity. So basically with that, with excessive absenteeism, with your three excused absences and your three. That you get before disciplinary action, an employee could realistically miss six days a year. Just calling and saying, I'm not coming in today before it results in discipline, this has become. An issue where we have employees who in one department, we have an employee who's missed twenty-six days in a year. And we have no policy laying out what is considered excessive, so that's the. The reason for this and in a nutshell, what it is, so. Any questions?
Under uh disciplinary action. Is that three or or unexcused absent? Is that going to be here, here or consecutive?
No, so it would be three whenever they fall during the year, so today, three weeks from now, two months from now. And we don't want this to be something, it's like you have to. Terminate an employee because they've missed too many work, if they're a good employee, supervisors do have some leeway in there. But this also gives them the policy to say you have missed too much work and we need to fix this. Or it's going to result, could result in disciplinary action, so it's three in a rotating twelve-month period. Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. Hopefully with this policy, um it'll kind of give us a little bit more teeth in our personnel policy. Uh but it also kind of helps define um, you know, what is allowed and and what isn't, that we've got. You know, I've had employees that have other jobs and they take off work from here, leave without pay status. To go work another job, well, for me, even at a part-time level, San Juan County is the priority. And if you're if you're skipping our work here and our employment here to go work somewhere else, well. San Juan County isn't the priority anymore, it's your other job, yet. There's things here that we need to have done and so focus your priority back here, this. Without having it in a policy to where we can discipline somebody on a leave without pay status. This gives us a little bit more teeth, so that you cannot be unexcused, you cannot be in a leave without pay. We give vacation time and it's plenty of vacation time, we give sick time. We give vacation time and it's plenty of vacation time, we give sick time. Um and we give long-term sick leave as well, so there's like three different banks that employee has, can choose from. And they use all that time up, so you're you're looking close to a month.
So the total, so you get two weeks of vacation time, a week of sick time. A little over a week of long-term sick, so you could realistically be gone for four weeks with pay. So if you've used all of that and you have to go without pay, that's excessive.
So in the policy, so somewhere it says. You you will not have second job?
No, they can, uh we don't pay enough, we've gotta allow employees to have second jobs, a lot of our employees throughout the county have second jobs, but. When you're here and you're expected to be here from nine to five or nine to noon, whatever, be here, I mean, we. We pay, we take taxpayer money and for these positions and for the service that we do. As county a- and employees need to be here when we hire them.
And the problem falls when I'm scheduled to be here from eight until five, Monday through Friday. I take a second job that requires me to work like three to five, a couple of days a week, so I take two hours off here to go do that. I'm no longer doing what the county is paying me to do. Even if I take the time off without pay, I'm no longer fulfilling my job for the county.
The other one we've seen last year, uh you know, commissioners, you typically give every year a. Um administrative leave day for holidays, for Christmas, um and we we push that up and publish it to all of. Our employees, it's kind of a Christmas gift to them, take this day off, paid. Um well, we had a department last year that also felt that they needed to do that as well. Uh and so they gave an extra day of leave on their own, um this helps prevent that, so any leave. Um has to be approved by the commission first, they, department heads just can't. Give leave out as they will, you know, or as they want to, uh to benefit other employees, because then other departments here, but and then. You create this imbalance of.
Worse my day off.
Yeah, worse my day off. There's other department did it, why can't I, or you get departments say, you know. It's Friday, it's noon, how about you guys all go home, you know, and that's. They're here to do a job, we hire them to do a job, the taxpayers, more importantly. Pay for that service as an eight to five level and their, uh whether their property tax, sales tax comes to support that. And then we're paying employees to not be here, um and that's, that's just wrong, out outside of our vacation and sick time to. To just give it willy-nilly here and there, so it kind of brings it back, makes a little bit more equal and. Kind of gives a standard for department heads to.
It doesn't affect the commissioner's ability to say, you guys, happy day, Christmas Eve, whatever, you still have the capacity to do that. But you as the commissioners, as the commissioner, are the only ones who have the capacity to do that. Department heads cannot take that upon themselves.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thanks for doing this, this is long overdue.
And it's gonna be a long time finishing.
You'll see more of these policies and we'll bring them back at a later date to codify these in a commission meeting. But we wanted to at least present it to you, we sent it out to our department heads as well, so they. They can see these beforehand, and then we'll bring them back to to finalize them and stick them in the book and it'll, it shall be.
Next.
Fry Canyon Discussion.
Good morning commissioners. BLM is planning on stabilizing the tailings and the pond waste at the Fry Canyon mill site, this was an old mill site. And this is as, as uh not prescribed, but as allowed by CIRCLA. As well as other laws. And a, an engineering evaluation and cost estimate has been prepared and BLM has offered. A comment, public comment period on that report. Now you may or may not know that the Fry Canyon Mill Site was used to process copper and uranium ore in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. And the site consists of a tailings pile as well as separate tailings ponds near Fry Creek. Now, the tailings ponds have tested, have been tested for uh hazardous materials. And testing shows that there were modest exceedances of acceptable risk levels for arsenic, copper. Radium, uranium, thorium, and lead. So there are three remediation actions to consider uh for this cleanup. And the reason they're they're doing this would be to reduce the risk to human and ecological receptors. Whether wildlife or livestock, to reduce the potential for off-site migration of the contaminants that are in the area. And to reduce the leaching potential from the contaminants which are adjacent to Fry Creek. They've got three alternatives that are being considered in this engineering report. One is no action, leave things as they are. Another would be an incit to containment of a concrete cap. Over the tailings ponds and the tailings, and the estimated cost for that one, excuse me, over a thirty-year period. Would be just over three million dollars. The other alternative, which is the preferred alternative, is. To take the tailings pond waste and consolidate that with the tailings pile. And cover that with a six-inch soil cover from a borrow area, somewhere in the area. Total cost of this estimated is one point three million dollars over thirty years. Now you see, you see the map up there, the the first one, the green color one shows the general vicinity. Of Fry Canyon and the mill site, which is south of U ninety-five. The other area photo drawing you can see shows the tailings pile. Kind of in the center of the photo, as well as the six tailings ponds near Fry Creek. Now the creek runs from the bottom of that uh photo to towards the top. And approximately a half mile away downstream of that, Sandy, Gale, and Preston Johnson. Have a residence as well as a water well and water rights to Fry Creek. They also have the BLM grazing permit in that area. Now the Johnsons prefer no action because it's been, nothing's been done in years and supposedly no problems. But they realize that BLM has a requirement by law to do certain cleanup actions. The Johnsons then are mainly concerned with any topsoil loss that would be used for that cover. To fill the consolidated tailings. It's not clear where the topsoil would be taken from, there are, I think, two possible sites, but uh those are not. Been been told to us. Now the concern there is if you take uh topsoil from one area, you're gonna leave a scar, or you're gonna reduce. That area's capability to prevent erosion as well as to produce forage. So the Johnsons have have requested that the county write a support letter to them. For them, to the BLM, basically stating that. Anything that's done for the cleanup in that area should take their operation, livestock operation, residents, water supplies. Into consideration, as well as a consideration for where this topsoil cover would come from. Now the letter that is here for your consideration basically states that the county generally agrees with. With a cleanup effort, which would be consistent with the risk of contaminants. That may adversely affect human health and environmental conditions in the area. And then if the preferred alternative is selected, we ask that special consideration be given to minimize. The residual effects of the topsoil removal from wherever that borrow site is. The borrow site should retain its capability to help prevent or minimize potential erosion in the area. And we also ask that consideration and any planning for that remediation action, take the Johnsons. Operation, both livestock and residential and water situation into consideration with any remediation at the site. So basically, this, this is just a a comment or a support letter, uh supporting the Johnsons' concerns. In any, any remediation effort that might take place there. Do you have any questions on the, the uh proposal or the general area or the situation there?
Borrow pit uh to cover some of these. Where did the uh propose to obtain those uh?
There have been four borrow pits or borrow areas identified. One of them, or two of them have been disqualified for various reasons, so there's two possibilities. But I've not been able to get from BLM where those borrow sites are. They're supposedly within the local area, within a few miles of this site. So they're not, they're not something where you'd have to haul from, say, Monticello. Seventy-five miles to Fry Canyon there, in the local area.
You indicated uh alternative one would cost three million?
That's alternative to the concrete cap. The engineering estimate was about three million, a little over three million, over a thirty-year period.
Alternative one.
Pardon me?
Alternative one costs.
Alternative one is no action, so there'd be no, no additional, no cost there.
Okay. Then three billions, um is it gonna be a, just one? One uh. No time limit, just do one, one phase? The other one is uh one point three billion over three years.
Thirty years, both of them, alternative two and three, those cost estimates are a thirty-year period. And that includes any monitoring that would be done after the initial dirt work is done.
Okay.
So the letter there is up for your consideration, whether you want to.
How is funding this?
Pardon me?
Funding.
Funding would be something with the federal government, I don't know how that would come out. I don't know, probably, I, that's not in the reports, I don't know where they would get all the funding that would be needed.
They get the money from the treasury, they just print some more.
Oh, okay. As long as uh San Juan County doesn't.
No, no cost to San Juan County.
Okay, good.
Basically, what the Johnsons are asking is for no action, alternative number one, right?
But yes, that's their preferred, but they realize there are certain limitations. By law, CIRCLA and others that require cleanup, even though the exceedances of these non-cancer-causing. Elements, there's still, there's still a risk of human health and environmental risk there.
You mentioned arsenic, part of it, which is a health risk. So the process of, let's say, uh. Any water, rainwater, snow, uh. That's uh seep into the uh livestock pond. Then the livestock pond is consumed by the cattle.
Right.
Their arsenic pass on. And the cattle through humans consumption, so.
It's a possibility, I'm not the chemist or the doctor to be able to tell you what risk that would be, but. That sounds logical, especially for the tailings ponds, which are right on the creek bank. The, the upper tailings pile is on a higher elevation and although it could leach and be washed down. There's not the risk of that as there is with the tailings ponds being washed into the creek and then going down all the way into Lake Powell, Colorado River.
Doesn't, doesn't seem like there's any uh. Or containment. Structure in place.
No, I don't think so. Especially for the tailings pond.
Run off all directions, whatever.
Right.
The slope allows. Yeah, those are, they were, those are the only concern that I have.
Really, you act like it rains in San Juan County. And hadn't, hadn't it rained since sixty-two, have we?
Well, it's in Fry Canyon, Fry Canyon, so it doesn't, it's not, uh, no precipitation. Twenty-five years.
Well, when it, when it rains, it pours.
Morgan salt.
Think a lot of it, where they're just coming in and trying to ca- contain everything, bring in the topsoil so that they can cover this issue to. To avoid that migration of the contaminants, uh you do have the water that that runs right through here and. When it does rain and that forty-year storm that goes right by through this area, you've got the leaching, they're just. Federal government's trying to clean up their mess, and so that's kind of what we are, but in. In this, you also do have a member of the public that ranches in this area that, you know, they're worried about. Taking um that topsoil there and placing it on top of this, yet they just lost a lot of forage potential and and mind you, this is. This is an area where they have thousands of acre that that they run on this allotment.
Right.
And so that's kind of Nick's. Recommendation in this letter is that we kind of support that alternate three, right Nick, um. But just kind of that cautionary note to.
How many acres does the whole thing cover? Looks like a.
This uh.
Hundred and sixty?
Drawing? No, I think I did some figures, I'm not sure if I got them, just on the tailings. Just from looking at the photo, the tailings ponds and and whatnot, seemed like it was. The tailings pile was around four acres you're looking at in there. And then the tailings ponds, if you put them in a big rectangle, it's probably three acres. So it's not a big acreage with the tailings that are there. So if the tailings paw, tailings uh pile is roughly four acres, you can just project that out. Maybe you'd get, what, twenty, twenty-five acres total in that whole area right there. But the, the uh cover would be just over the tailings pile. With the tailings pond's waste put on top of it.
Okay, they'll, they've come out with the uh scope of work. I imagine they would have uh something like a Mexican hat?
Well, the, the, yeah, stabilized, right.
Through with the project.
Yes. I don't think it would be as fancy as what you've probably seen at Mexican Hat with a rock cover. This would just be natural soil over the top.
We call it uh, yay, so, yes, it's. Yay, it's the giant, en- envy.
Okay.
They bear those.
I'd recommend we send the support letter with your signature, Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Okay.
This had exceeded their timeframe of public comments in there or. Comment period, they had allowed us, knowing that our commission meeting was later, past the, the deadline, they have allowed us to. To take this before you, then we didn't need an action on it as mo- mainly. We would just send this, unless you have any other changes or recommendations with the letters, it's kind of our. Our opinion in there. But if there's no questions or.
None.
Okay, alright.
Next.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is. Okay, the next one is we need to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session.
I will go ahead and second. Any comment? Not, all those in here say aye.
Aye.
Aye also, two ayes opposed. On. Motion passed, we're not in executive session, hands sixteen.
Okay, hold on, let's. Get to the point where.
Anne Marie would close the door.
We're gonna end this meeting and then when we re-adjourn, we'll just re-adjourn, it won't be live when we re-adjourn and and.